Janice, we can only see your shoulder.
I know.
That's the goal, I think.
See this little, this little thing peeking down in the corner?
I put it on my Christmas tree. I'm just hoping that I get everybody. I'll stay unmuted until I know everybody's in.
Steven, Justin, Peter, David's on there, and then I think Levi, are you with us?
How's my audio, Nathan?
Sounds good. I can hear you a lot clearer.
Okay, good. Thank you.
There's one other number on here, but I don't remember if that's Levi's or not.
I think one could be David's.
Yeah, one is David's for sure, and then.
Oh, I see the other one. Yep.
I think Levi's Nathan is like a three eight five number or something.
You're looking for Levi's number three eight five eighty four ninety two.
Perfect. Good memory. Yeah, I don't see it on here quite yet. Give him a couple more minutes.
Nathan, did you send out an email with the budget on it?
Yeah, I sent one to the council members.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I did put you at on his co-host, just in case.
You can see the budget. That looks good.
Thank you.
Well, six oh four on here. I think we'll go ahead and get going. Hopefully Levi joined us. I'll keep an eye out for him. Like to call the special meeting to order six oh four December twenty second, twenty twenty. Go ahead and recognize visitors. If there's anyone on here that would like to be acknowledged, go ahead and state your name this time.
Joe Armand is here.
Nothing. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm muted.
Right off the bat, our first agenda item is the public hearing for RFQ. I'm gonna take that off the agenda. There's still some work going on to see exactly what needs to be done there. So it'll make our meeting a little bit shorter, but I want to go and take that off, and that'll leave us with just the final budget adoption. So with that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing at six oh five. And we'll jump right into it. Council members should have an email that I sent out. Just right off the bat, I guess, there are some, some of those beginning estimated beginning bank balances have changed. Those, some of those were quite a bit different for the good. So that's one thing right off the bat that I wanted to point out that changed. A lot of the other numbers that we went over during our workshop, most of those have not changed. And just tried to do some tidying up. So
Hey Nathan, real quick.
I don't know if you guys have questions or see anything that hasn't been answered yet, or anything of that nature. I'd kind of give it to the council to ask questions, or, or if you want me to explain anything, or anything of that nature.
Nathan, this is Justin. Real quick, on the right of your screen, it has that bar, like the convert bar or whatever. There's a little arrow like.
I did take Sherry's comment from the workshop that we had down at the bottom where we have the notes down there. I did put some line items next to those, so it's, it's a pretty good idea. So it's a little bit easier to follow. Some of those are split up. You'll see the ones that don't have line items. Those are, those are ones that are split up in between different funds and stuff, so. Let's see here. Any, any major questions or red flags that you guys see? Anything that needs to be explained? I mean, we've, we have met a couple of times and answered quite a few questions, but if there's anything else still standing.
Few things I might have missed last time, Nathan. Line nine, what's an RET?
Nothing, huh? Trying to think if there's anything else that I need to point out that has changed. I don't think so.
Nathan.
I guess there is one, one other thing that I would like, oh. Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
We're all muted. Can you unmute me?
I I am not able to hear you. I don't know if it's just me or everybody.
No. You have to unmute us.
Nathan, David, can you hear me?
Can you unmute? Steven, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Justin.
Oh, because I asked some other questions, but Nathan never even responded, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, we're, we're fine, I think.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear us, Nathan? I don't think Nathan can hear us.
No, I don't think so, but we can hear each other, so it.
Yeah. I see Janice's arm.
I'm unmuting everybody, and I made him co-host, so he should be able to. He should be able to hear everything.
Now it's video. Yeah, we can hear you. Oh, you dialed in, huh? From the City Hall?
Uh, no, I'm just on my account on my computer.
Oh, okay. Can you hear us now, Nathan?
I can. So you, you guys could hear me through all that. I just couldn't hear you guys, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what the deal was, but it's working now.
So Peter had a question about line number nine, and I had a question after that.
Okay.
It was a RE, art RE one.
Okay, you wanna, just what that is, Peter?
What's it saying for? I must have missed it last time.
Uh, that is the real estate excise tax. And that's an amount that, that we get. I believe that's through the county.
Is that for the sale of real estate?
Yeah, it's every time a property sells, we get it. So every time in the state of Washington, you sell a property, it's, it's like one point five nine percent or something. And then part of that comes back to, to the city. So that number varies every year, but it depends on how much property transfers within the city of Harrington. When people buy or sell houses or any other commercial properties.
Okay, thanks.
That's Peter. That's how the money that we used earlier to pay for some of the money we use to pay for the old McGregor Building improvements. That was money that we had received over several years. And it's, it varies by year. Some years it's two thousand dollars, some years it's, it's a hundred dollars. So it's kind of a.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Nathan, I, my question was about the util, what are we doing with utilities? Or what did, what did you come up with? What's the budget here show?
Yeah, so I have not reflected any change into the budget for twenty twenty one for changing the utility rates. We had spoke a little bit about it last time that I think we plan to possibly change at least some stuff on the garbage, if not in general, but as the numbers that are in the budget right now are set at our current rates. And then I plan on knowing that if we do change something after the first of the year, that then we will have to amend the budget at that point or shortly after. So I have the rates not changing at all right now, and that's the numbers that are reflected in the budget.
So it's the same for inactive accounts?
Yes, we currently still have, that's part of the calculation for the revenues for the different water sewer and garbage, yes, has inactive accounts.
Okay, thank you.
But so Nathan, did I understand then that we're gonna try to have a hearing then in, at the next council meeting to to go through that utility rate process that we typically do with the budget?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And I need to make sure that that everything's done in the timely manner. I know there's been some talk about how long it can, it takes to go into effect and that, and I need to make sure that all the, all of our ducks are in the row to do that. But yeah, these numbers are solely based on what we stand at now.
This is Peter. I have a few questions, Nathan.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, line twenty four, you have a yellow box. At the last meeting, you indicated that yellow indicated uncertainty. Is there an uncertainty on that, on those three items?
So that, that's just the bars code part of it. The Novia grant, actually, the sale of surplus fire truck should be okay, but the sale of dirt and gravel and the Novia grant, that's just for the numbers, not for the values. The values themselves are green, and I'm comfortable with those numbers. It was just the bars code for it is all.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Question about line forty two, auditing and consulting. I'm curious to know why auditing and consulting are lumped. Those are two separate functions, aren't they?
Um, I believe so for that bars code, I think that's just, um, that's just the description, or maybe how we put the description in there. That line item particular is particular for our state audit.
Okay.
So that's just the description, the wording in there. But that, that total amount is just for our state audit.
So it's just auditing, it's budgeted for there?
Correct.
And not consulting for auditing as well?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, line one thirty seven, if you would please. Profiting wastewater treatment plant contract operator. I thought we were paying a contract operator six hundred dollars a month.
And we are. So this, the fourteen four is the original amount that Casey had said that it was a month, just as explained before. We actually pay her less than what originally she was going to charge per month, and that's just due to the, the amount of services that she provides. So I left that in there, just as it has been before for the chance that say Casey doesn't choose to do it anymore, and we have to go elsewhere, or some other, other reason that we have to hire another place, or Casey decides to to charge the full amount, maybe. I just left that in there as a cushion, but you are correct. We do only pay six hundred per month.
That's twelve months a year, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. And line one sixty five, I think, is what I've written here. I can't read my own handwriting. Uh, Emma. Yeah, sewer construction fund has thirteen dollars in it?
That is correct.
What's that fund used for? In what event would it be used?
That would be for construction us of new any, any new or any construction of our sewer system. I'm not necessarily the plant itself, but of infrastructure upgrades or fixes that wouldn't be correct to come out of the regular sewer fund. So this is like if we had a project, I know Justin has explained it, like they replaced some pipe on Second Street a couple of years ago before that surfacing and before that road got rebuilt. It'd be something similar.
Is that an adequate amount? You're just, in your opinion?
I would be okay, I'm okay with it now. I would say that if we had a planned project that we were gonna do, that we would obviously want to move some money into that, into that account.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Is that correct, Justin? When the Second Street project went, you guys ended up moving money into that account and then coming out of there for some of the pipe replacement?
Yeah, it, it's for special projects. I don't know if that's, Dylan was the mayor when that happened, so I don't know if that's the exact fund, but that's what you said was, was right in line with my understanding.
Okay. Thanks for your questions, Peter.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you for your answers.
Nathan, do you mind going back down to the bottom again, the notes? The changes or whatever? This is a general question. I mean, it's more, obviously it's in here, but the replacement city pickup, do you have a do you have any idea time wise when that could, like when we would have the funds where that could occur, or are you anticipating doing that early in twenty twenty one, or do you have an idea at this point?
Oh, I do. I would like to do it early in twenty twenty one. Obviously, if, you know, we get certain we get certain money in certain times of the year, so we'd have to make sure that that money is there. But yes, I'd like to do that sooner than later. I think that's a pretty, pretty vital part of our operations. I mean, we're, we do have a pickup that is being used now, but it's, it's not quite set up. You know, it's the one ton, it's flatbed on there, so it's not quite set up for hauling tools and everything else that the guys need, so. I don't have a, an absolute date, but I would like to do it early in twenty one, be that the money's there for it. That's part of two we're working on. Currently going through the process of being approved to purchase through state surplus and some of those other well, through the state. So some of their surplus stuff, that's a that's a website that's set up that you can then bid on surplus items through the state and we talked about the plow, I believe, the snow plow in, oh, maybe October. But that would be a similar pla, the same place to go through to get that, that pickup. We're a lot. There's a lot better chance of getting a better deal through that website, getting surplus pickups from the state. It come from all different entities too. I mean, it's not just the state washed up, but through any state agency, that's the, that's the go-to where all that surplus equipment is bought and sold. So that's the plan at this point.
Sure. I had one other question too on the, so I'm assuming the, the budget here has the way, the proposed wages that you have that were in that email you sent out with the, this budget?
Yes, correct. Those are tied in.
The ones, I don't know if it's a math error or a sale error, but let's see. For the city librarian, it shows a zero percent increase, but the twenty twenty figure is about, is a slightly lower per month than the twenty twenty one proposed figure on the wage sheet document that you sent.
Man, I looked that over, and I obviously didn't look it over enough times.
Because it says zero percent increase, but the dollar amount is, it's less than five dollars, but I just wasn't sure what you were if that, except it was a sale error or something. You just missed it. There you go, right?
Yep, you're right.
Wasn't that, Nathan, was that figured in on a, a prior raise? Did, did she get a prior raise on that? Is that what you were looking at?
It could have been. And that's just an oversight, probably. I was, I'm sure that seeing those, the twenty twenty one increase percent and dollar amount, that it should have been tied to that, but obviously there's, I have something that's not exactly correct in there. I'm not sure why. So yes, that, that twenty twenty one regular should read the same as twenty twenty, just like to the treasures that way. Yeah, it should, those amounts should be the same. I don't know why they're not. So what I need to do is look at, then look at the line item in the budget itself.
And just so, along that same line, both the the ones at the very bottom, the meter reader, the memorial hall and extra helper all minimum wage, but those all say, there is a slight increase there, but they show zero percent. So I don't, it probably should match the minimum wage line that you have about the fifth lineup. Those probably should match that since they're stated as being minimum wage.
Yeah, so those numbers and under the twenty twenty one regular just got put in there.
Sure. But if you see like the minimum wage numbers in the, the percent increase and the dollar increase is correct. And then, so you could just carry that through
Yep.
to the bottom ones, but just when you, so you, when you clean this up, and it's printed as, as the, the published ru, wage sheet or rate sheet or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah, or just the figures.
Yep. Okay.
Question, Nathan, this is Peter.
Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed you have a yellow bar, yellow box around the bias or next to the bias software. Is that an indication of uncertainty, or you're just waiting for a bars designation?
Yep, just the bars designation.
Okay.
The mount, the mount is okayed.
Yeah.
And Janice walked me through a little bit on how those bars codes become for certain things, so it's a little different than what I thought, but we should be able to get those in there, no problem. I hope. Justin, did you have any problem in the past? I noticed there was a few that, you know, were in there previous years that didn't have bars code of, of getting bars codes figured out for certain things?
No, so the challenge is bars codes now is online only, and we used to when, when Bunny was our clerk, we had the existing ones, and so when we added a few different things, that's why there was, I, I put, I started the yellow thing myself. I mean, I started that. It's not, it's not important for the budget, so to speak. I mean, it just, that's a, a trigger for you or for Janice or whoever to do it. But so before, like, we threw a bunch of books, so I think you threw the books away, Nathan, when you cleaned out, but they were like nineteen ninety six or two thousand. They were almost twenty years old or twenty five years old, but the bars codes change every year. That's the, that's the beauty of bias. So inside bias, as long as we code it right, it'll, it'll kind of auto generate these bars codes. They'll probably, is what I'm, I remember when I talked to them a while ago. So we just have to make sure we match that, and it's, it's really the important part of it, it's when you're paying the bills or whatnot, the budget. That's why some of them were still blank, probably when you opened it.
Right.
That was something that I just highlighted that said, we have to figure out what this bars code is to when we code it, when we spend it, but that's really it's when we spend it or when we receive it is when we have to make sure we have it allocated correctly for, in, in the actual payment process or, or deposit process.
Okay. I all work with Janice there to try to get some of those cleaned up. You know, obviously, some of them that are obviously already in bias, like you're saying, it's gonna have some, so it's just a matter of spending a little bit of time and getting, getting those in this document.
But you can also go, I remember I went online to the auditor's website or somewhere, and you could find, they have a list of the bars codes. You just pick one which one you think is best suited towards that as well. I do believe when we did our audit a couple of years ago, there was a few ones that they told us that we needed a that we had incorrectly coded, or they were applied to the wrong way, but it wasn't a big deal. that we had incorrectly coded or they were applied to the wrong way, but it wasn't a big deal. Was it something they caught because of what we interpreted or what we knew or didn't know versus what it should have, should have been, but. And that's a way the state uses those codes across the board. Every city uses the same codes. The 300s are deposits and the, I believe, yeah, 300s are intake and 500 are, are spending.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, anyway, but they, and they correlate some of them, you know, you'll see like the 308, 8,000 here. It's the same thing here for the investment balance. So, but it's a way for the, in the state of Washington is very unique. I think we're one of the only states that has this code by itself. And, and so it's, it's unique to Washington state and, but every city and then the state uses that for when they go track things and they see what cities are spending and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Okay. See Levi jumped on here with this. Levi, do you have any questions? We've answered a few here, but.
Uh, nothing right now.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the publics or anything that I can answer before we move forward?
Been a really painless process, Nathan. You've done a great job of it. Everybody had a hand in it.
Thank you. It was definitely, definitely a new experience. I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
I'm excited to kind of move forward to and get, uh, working with bias more and get everything more into a centralized into the system and, and excited to see, uh, what happens next year in the process.
Nathan, excuse me, Nathan?
Yeah.
When will it be available to get a copy of the budget?
I can give you a copy as this one stands. It's on the screen anytime you want. And then if I end up, uh, being able to clean, to get some of these other bars cap codes in there and other stuff, uh, clean up that wage sheet and make sure that everything is a hundred percent correct, uh, I would hope by next week at the latest.
Okay.
But none of the numbers will change. It'll just be correcting errors, I guess.
Right.
Typos I'd like to call.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Bet.
Unless I'm cutting off Joe or any other member of the public that I'm not aware that's on here. Are you ready to entertain a motion, Nathan?
I am.
You have to close the hearing first.
Okay. Well, I would say no other comment at this time that I've, I'm hearing at least, uh, go ahead and close the public hearing for the 2021 budget adoption at 6:31.
Now, Stephen, you can make your motion.
I move to adopt the budget and the rate schedule as presented.
Uh, I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the 2021 budget adoption. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, voting yes, signify by saying aye.
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 Peter, David, did you guys get in there? Did I just not hear it?
David's gonna abstain.
Okay, um, Peter?
Nathan, it looks like we lost Peter.
Okay.
But Janice emerged. You're on mute, Janice. I can't hear you.
I'm checking for Peter right now.
You checking your screen?
Yep.
Peering around the corner?
Hi.
High and low?
I don't, yeah, I don't see him.
Well, wait a minute, I guess. And then if we don't get him back in a timely manner, then you can go forward.
I'm fine waiting a few minutes. I think we've moved through pretty quick on this meeting and
Yeah.
prefer that Peter get a chance to have his say, so at least for a few more minutes of waiting here.
I'm good with that.
While we're waiting for that, Nathan or Stephen, do you know anything about the iPads?
Sorry, need to come off mute. Yeah, so. Oh, um, so we're moving forward on that. How to get signed up? Again, I'm trying to get some basic remote configuration capabilities and some abilities to keep some restrictions on device usage in place before we hand them out. Uh, and that required setting up an account with Apple Business Manager, which Nathan got that approved. What was that, end of last week, I think? That, um, it's really just a matter of time. The trade off is the city gets my time for free, but, uh, for all the things I've done in technology, I've never administered a group of iPads in a business scenario before. So I still am kind of going through bits and pieces, but I am planning on using some of my time off from work over the next, uh, two weekends to try and get some of this wrapped up enough to be able to get it out there. That's the other reason why the remote admin stuff is big, because that way I can get the devices to you and I can finish configuring them once you have them. Without that, I would need to get each device all configured and stuff, and then we'd have questions about, hey puppy. We'd have to get the, all the things, fingerprints and all of that kind of stuff and email accounts all done before they get handed out, which is even more of a backlog. So I'm hoping that we'll have the iPads handed out in January, but we'll see, early January.
So for our next meeting.
That's, that's my hope. Yeah. I don't know when 10 minutes comes up, but I think, say that's about the time where even if Peter's phones aren't working, he could pop down into City Hall and give his vote to you in person or something. So it, the 10 minute mark is when I'd probably call it.
Okay. I don't know. When did we?
6:32.
Okay.
It's another five minutes.
There's Peter. I, I don't know if he usually calls in. It usually has his name on the, on the screen, so I don't know if he's using computer or calls in.
Uses a computer. That's why it has the name on there, just no video, but.
Also, I don't know if you want, audio got a lot better.
Yeah.
You could try a cellphone.
I think Janice wins the prize for the best background. I mean, can talk about festive and puppies and Christmas trees. I mean, what more could you want?
Right? They like to be involved in.
Also, I guess I'll use the opportunity to tell some people, whoever's on the call, like Sherry already knows. But, uh, I figured since we've had delays in getting the, uh, the city credit card out, that I was just gonna launch into getting some of the website stuff and email things going. Because some of that's also prerequisite to the iPads, because I'm hoping that each of your guys' accounts will be registered to your new harrington.city address. Have to kind of pick accounts before I get the iPads out there. There's a lot of things that all kind of depend on each other. So I went ahead and did that on my own personal credit card. The city can reimburse me or not. We can pick up next year. I'm not really concerned about the 40 whatever dollars, so do with it as you will. Um, but to that end, there is harrington.city. You can go to the website, but I get, the website's gonna change. As I mentioned to everyone, it's gonna be a very basic link based website. Right now there's a generic WordPress on there and okay, so I finish up to say that notably, I'm hoping that in the future, the Zoom connection links, you'll just be able to go to zoom.harrington.city.com or not, dot, no, there's not dot, that last dot com was not purposeful. It's just harrington.city. In the future, you'll be able to go to zoom.harrington.city and you won't have to type in the long link, uh, that we have when we have the media announcements these days. And, uh, that also, if you go to youtube.harrington.city, it takes you to the city's YouTube channel, which I was kind of hoping to have this YouTube meeting stream out, this Zoom meeting stream out over YouTube today. But for very reasons, that did not happen, but we're moving in positive directions on that. So anyways, Peter.
Peter's back.
Okay. Joe, I noticed you came back on and Sherry as well. I don't know if, if everybody, if there was some connection issues or what, but.
Yeah, I'm on DSL. It just simply, my whole network in my house, both networks just blanked out.
Okay. Well, we got Peter with us, back with us, so, uh, we were in the middle of, uh, voting. I have a yay vote from Stephen, Levi and Justin. Um, Peter, I don't know when you dropped off exactly. But we're, do you have any more?
And I'd like to record an I vote.
Okay. I have an I for you.
That's the vote on the 2021 budget. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Just when you said hearing none, my internet connection went down.
Okay. Well, we got you back. I'm glad we waited. Uh, okay. So just to clear things up, we have four I votes. All opposed, same sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And recorded, please.
Okay. So you're voting no?
Right.
Okay. I just want to clear it up to the first extension. Okay. Well, uh, vote passes four, one, zero. So thank you guys for getting back on here and, and holding out until we got Peter back. So, that is all I have. Pretty short meeting. I would like to go to public comment if there is any. Okay, I don't hear any. I just like to give it a minute. I don't.
Nathan?
Yeah.
This is Denise.
Okay.
Hello. Out of curiosity, how come Scotty never got his pay raise?
Uh, the full pay raise, he, there was a pay raise in there, just not the full, full amount that was requested.
Actually, actually that, how much, did you not, did you cap their insurance?
Correct.
Okay, so then it's a wash.
Uh, not fully, no. That, that amount that came out of the insurance is built back into the salaries plus some. It, it, it came out to about, uh, seven point seven percent, I believe, is what the, the cap, the insurance capped amount was.
So you gave him a two percent rate?
Uh, just a little bit over.
And you, you keep him as a supervisor?
Correct. Would have been Scott was seven, 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 so it's about a three point three percent was just on top, which that was the actual increase in.
So you got a dollar something raise?
Correct. Yep.
As a supervisor?
Correct.
I don't know how you guys can feel comfortable with that. I think it's kind of a slap in the face.
It definitely is a slap in the face.
It's horrible. And I think if it was reversed and done to you, I think you'd be pissed too.
I'd like to think that I've done what I can with the numbers that I have.
Oh, I don't know, Nathan. I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Okay, anything else?
I don't know. I think that, I think you're, I, the council should be embarrassed. The insurance, insurance is horrible. And now you're giving him just a dollar rate. That's not right. Not right.
Who's speaking, please?
Who's asking, please?
Peter Davenport.
This is Scott's wife. Um, I'm Lynn Magellan. I'm Scott's wife.
Thank you.
You betcha. So we'll have to think long and hard on if you're gonna have a supervisor come the first of the year.
I would certainly hope so.
Oh, I doubt it. To be honest with you. You, you've slapped him in the face quite a bit, but it's up to him. It'll be his decision.
Absolutely. Any other comment on the budget?
I didn't hear that part. I would have talked earlier.
Okay, I don't hear any other public comment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Peter so moves.
Okay, do you have a second?
This is Levi. I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of adjourning, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As I.
Aye. David, aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think I heard everybody all opposed. Okay, we will adjourn at 6:47. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yep.
Thanks for all your hard work, man.
Yep. Yep.